Ready?
Ready.
Here you hear, you hear, you hear, you have a couple of questions down session.
Just came from the pledge and prayer. Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Everyone please stay standing for prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day, we thank you for this rain that we've been having. We thank you what a blessing it is that we can get this rain that was desperately needed for the farmers and the crops. We desperately thank you for that. Lord, we ask that you give us the strength and the wisdom that we need as we're doing the work for the taxpayers. It's such an important thing. We need your help and guidance in doing our job. We would also ask that you watch over the children as they're back to school and that they have a safe and prosperous school year, and that you just bless them and watch over all the schools in the county, in the state of Indiana, and our nation. Help the children. In your sins, name that we pray. Amen.
All right. Any special announcements, recognition? I believe we have some. Make sure Pesky has those.
Years of service recognition. Five years of service Bradley McGuire. Brandon Niedler, five years of service. Christina Summers, ten years of service. Jody Hamby, fifteen years of service. Karen Windsor, fifteen years of service. Christina Thatcher, twenty years of service. And Brent Deckard, twenty-five years of service. We really thank all of the employees. And there is a recognition that's been signed by the commissioners. So, thank you. Thank all of you so much.
Thank you, Commissioner. Moving on, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting.
So moved.
Second. Motion second to approve the minutes from the last meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. They are approved. Signature. Moving on, we have departmental reports. Looks like we have Human Resources, Carrie Riker.
Okay, so I am reporting on the employee survey that Human Resources Department sent out in June. Employee Satisfaction Survey. This was intended to be just a baseline survey to get a feel for employee satisfaction and to help zero in on any topics or specific areas that we might need to do a more detailed survey on, such as safety and security, employee benefits, mental health, et cetera. Of approximately 500 employees, we had 160 tier responses. Of those, seventeen were part-time employees and 145 were full-time employees. As expected, questions regarding benefits or PTO or salaries were rated low on a scale of one to 10, with one being strongly disagree and 10 strongly agree. When we asked if your salary is competitive with other organizations with a similar position, 121 responses scored between zero and three, with zero being strongly disagree. We asked two questions in regards to leadership in the county, including elected officials, department heads, and supervisors. Results for both questions show that approximately 80 respondents feel that leadership performance and response to issues could be better. Again, this was a pretty broad question. It included multiple levels of leadership. So, a follow-up survey could help narrow that down to see if the performance is more at the supervisory level or the department heads, et cetera. When asked what employees enjoyed most about their positions in Howard County, they responded with coworkers, flexibility, the hours, serving the public, and teamwork. The HR office would like to continue to send out employee surveys to stay in contact with the employees, to make them feel heard and valued. We know when leadership listens, then employees are more likely to be happy and to stay employed.
Is there one department that was participating more than others, or do you know?
I don't know.
Mm-hmm. It's all anonymous, right?
I can get that for you.
Well, I don't think we've had enough time to really
Right.
take this in. I'd just like to take it under advisement. I'd like to look through it and kind of take it in before I make any comments.
Okay.
Thanks, Carrie.
Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie. See, Plan Commission, Great Sheeline. He has a stack, it looks like.
Good afternoon. Yeah, I have six items before you. I have three rezonings and three subdivisions. The first rezoning is case 6CZ23. We're rezoning from agricultural to rural residential. This is at 2262 South 700 West, and we did not have any remonstrance at the Plan Commission meeting.
Make a motion as read.
Motion second to approve. That one is presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved.
The next rezoning case is case 7CZ23. Again, this is from agricultural to rural residential. This is at 1225 West 350 South. And again, no remonstrance at the meeting.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second to approve is presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved. Next.
Yes, the next one is case 8CZ23. Again, this is a rezone from rural residential to agricultural. This is at 1723 North 400 West. And again, no remonstrance.
Also move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve is presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's also approved. And when you're ready, we can move on there.
Okay, yeah. We have three subdivisions next. The first subdivision is Pottersville subdivision. This is at 2262 South 700 West, and it is a one lot. And again, no remonstrance.
Approved as read.
Second.
Motion second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved.
Next subdivision is Burns Homestead subdivision, excuse me. This is 630 South 1200 East. And again, it's a one lot subdivision. No remonstrance at the meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
To approve as seconded as read. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That one's also approved.
And the last subdivision is Davis Divide subdivision. This is 1225 West 350 North. Again, one lot subdivision and no remonstrance at the meeting.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second to approve is presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved also.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, Carrie.
Get these signatures. Let me get these back to you here. Thank you, sir. We're finishing those up. Next up, we'll have the Highway Department, Amber Toll. Looks like a brine sprayer sliding unit.
Yeah, so today I would like to seek permission to purchase two sprayer units for our new brine operations. These would be two tandem slide-ins. They are specifically designed for our existing tandem beds. And so, we have reached out to McGavick, and they have provided us a quote through the Source Wells system. So, that eliminates the need for other bidding process. And just because of the nature of this, it's very specific to our trucks, we needed to kind of work through this process and the design very intricately before we got a quote. So, we would like to go ahead and purchase two of those sprayers for a total cost of $67,644 even. And we're pretty excited to start our brine operations. I know we have spoken to you commissioners on several occasions of trying to get this brine operation started. I think, I know it will make the county much more efficient in our snow removal. And it's just, it's time for us to kind of move forward with this process. And this will allow us, if we purchase the sprayers now, we do have a deal worked out with McGavick to actually make brine this winter before our salt barn is built, so that we can start learning the brine process. Because there is going to be a pretty steep learning curve on how to use brine and how to most effectively use that in the county roads. So, we'd like to go ahead and start that process this year, this winter, with these spray units and then later on, our storage tank.
This is a brine. I probably know this answer, but the city's used it for years. It helps the snow melt off or helps you remove it quicker?
It helps the snow and ice not adhere to the roads. So, it does help with some of the melting process, but most importantly, it kind of doesn't help, doesn't allow that bond to happen, so that when we do plow, everything gets cleaned off a lot cleaner. We don't have to work so hard to clear off those roads, so.
Make a motion.
Motion second to motion.
Motion second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's present. That's approved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Amber. Any corrections? Dustin along. I don't think Dustin's here, but I think I see, yeah.
Yes. Brought a couple of copies of the Basically, we're requesting to place an ATM inside of the work release facility to limit traffic in and out for need for money. We do have vending machines that are in the work release, hopefully heading back on some of the jail meals that are being required to be trafficked over if they have access to funds that they can purchase their meals through the vending machine and such.
Because Alan looked at this?
Alan has looked through that, yes. I'm sorry. I should have clarified that first.
Sorry.
So, is there a way to put an ATM machine in there without a cost and a person to use it? I see there's a $3.
There is a cost to the person. I don't believe so. I wasn't part of any of the deliberation with this process. This has been done by Jeremy Lovell and Dustin, but they were unavailable tonight. So, you got the worst of all of us, evidently.
Always hate to go to an ATM machine and it costs me to get my money.
Yeah, without a doubt. We do see the largest amount of our escapes, I guess is the term you would use. Escapes are done once they're outside of the facility. So, anytime we can limit traffic in and out of the facility, it helps with escapes, but it also helps with trafficking stuff in and out as well. So, as I'm sure other law enforcement can attest to as well.
Sheriff, do you have ATM at the gym?
Do we know? Sheriff, if you can answer this. If there's a problem, I go in there, put my card in, get money. Something happens, who's going to give me my money? Who do I see?
I'm sure there's a contact with, I believe
In a mobile marketing.
Yeah, the company that monitors it would be, everything's under, everything's under camera, too. We have a pay machine that they can make payments, and that's right under a camera as well. So, I'm sure they can place it in a place that has both access to the ATM camera but also to the surrounding camera as well.
I'm not opposed to the idea, but I'm kind of a jack. I'm not in favor of charging them $3 to get their own money.
I can take it back to Jeremy Lovell and see if they can negotiate that. I'll do whatever you guys would like me to do.
I wouldn't mind having them answer that question, no.
Okay.
I know if I'm with, you know, one bank and I go to another bank's machine, they're going to charge me a service fee.
Right.
I get that.
Yeah.
Could we not go to a local bank and see if they could put a machine in there? Name a local bank, you know?
Okay, yeah.
Not trying to be difficult, I just
No, it's fine.
Yeah, that $3 is kind of steep, it looks like.
No, I don't know. That's just a question I'd like answered.
Okay, I will take it back to them.
It'd be nice to have that answered.
Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry to make you do all that work.
You're fine.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian.
Okay. Looks like new business. We have a Malcolm proposal. Daniel Vaughn.
I believe we sent the agreement over prior to, did you get a copy of what we're going to talk about today? Cost allocation plan. So
Yeah, there's a copy of it.
I think it's in the packet, yeah. I apologize. Every three years, we try to enter into a new agreement to work on the cost allocation plan. It's something that we work with the auditor's office on to just kind of go over. What the cost allocation plan does is the Howard County is entitled to 66% of every dollar spent on the Title IVD program. It's a program your clerk's office, the circuit court, and prosecutor partakes in on a monthly basis to get direct costs. We work with the circuit court and we work with the clerk's office. The indirect cost plan goes and identifies all the indirect costs for the year that were associated with that plan. How much did it cost to have sheriff deputies' security in the courthouse? How much does it cost to heat and light the buildings and things like that? We started working with Howard County in 2017, and since then, we've brought in half a million dollars through this plan. Every dollar that comes in through this plan goes into the county general fund and is unrestricted in its use. Our fee is typically paid out of what we call the county incentive fund. The county has access to three federal funds that can only be spent on IVD-related items. Since this is a IVD cost allocation plan, it's 100% eligible, meaning all the reimbursements will go back to the county general fund, but the county general fund will not pay for our services. It'll be paid for with incentive money. It's something we currently do. Well, I just came in to work on the 2022 plan today, and this allows us to start work next year on 2023, 24, and 25. So, this brings in around roughly $100,000 annually to the county general fund.
And how's it been working?
I would highly recommend it.
I would approve with Alan's approval, if Alan takes a look at it and has it approved and
And it's, yeah, and it's the same agreement. The only thing that's updated is the dates from the last agreement that we've entered into for the current plans that we're working on. But, yeah, I mean, obviously, we want you to feel comfortable with it. But, all that's changed over the years.
You want to take a look at it?
I want to take a look at it.
Alan, you're okay with this contract?
Well, he's
As long as, based upon what Mr. Vaughn said about just changing the days, I'm okay with it. I've approved these contracts in the past.
Okay, with Alan's recommendation, with Jessica's recommendation, I'll second.
Motion second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, moving on. Claims and reports. Looks like salary claims.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve. Salary claims as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Those are approved. We go on to payroll expense.
Move to approve as presented.
Motion second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Payroll expense second approved. Moving on to operating claims.
Move to approve as presented.
Second.
Motion second to approve as presented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Payroll claims approved. Any claims to ratify?
None.
Any monthly reports to receive?
I have weights and measures and the treasures report month ending 5/31 and treasures report month ending 6/31.
Okay, those as received. Any grants to
None.
Nothing. All right, down to our county attorney.
First, I have an ordinance to create a ready grant fund for the receipt of ready grant money for the broadband project.
What's the, I'd make the motion. I just don't know the number on it.
Okay, I'll make a motion. You see, I'll make a motion to approve ordinance number 2023-BCCO-27. This is the ordinance to create a ready grant fund.
Second.
Motion second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved.
Second, I have a resolution. It's an amendment to a resolution that was passed back on March 6th that established new precinct boundaries. And the only reason we're amending it is because we now have the new names and numbers that are assigned to precincts, but we've attached that as an exhibit to this resolution. Otherwise, it's the same resolution. We've just amended it to add that exhibit to it. And I'd need a number for that.
I'd make a motion as read on resolution 2023-BCCR-12.
Second.
Motion second to approve the BCCR-12. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved.
Next, I have a resolution adopting a policy for juror parking that we've discussed, which allows jurors to be provided with a parking permit to park around the courthouse as long as they're involved in a jury selection or jury trial. Then upon completion of the matter, they're at the courthouse for, they turn the parking permit back into the court. This is resolution number BCCR-11.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 2023-BCCR-11, a resolution adopting a policy for jury parking.
Second.
Motion second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved.
Thanks, Carrie, for all your work on that.
And I have another resolution. Would this be 13, Jessica?
Yes.
State Board of Accounts has, they require us to provide a conflict of interest policy, particularly for federal contracts. So, we've drafted a conflict of interest policy that applies to any county elected official, employee, agent, and so on, and this is simply a resolution that adopts the conflict of interest policy.
I'd make a motion to accept resolution 2023-BCCR-13 as read.
Second.
Motion second to approve. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved.
Lastly, I have to present to the board a settlement agreement between the Howard County Board of Zoning Appeals and Emerald Green Solar. You'll recall that Emerald Green Solar, about this time last year, applied for a special exception, and the Board of Zoning Appeals denied that application. And litigation ensued. Emerald Green requested judicial review of that decision. Meanwhile, they waited the required six months and reapplied. And the second time, the application for special exception was approved. And so, based upon that, based upon the ultimate approval of that, we've reached a settlement agreement with Emerald Green to simply dismiss the first piece of litigation. Now, that there's no money changing hands, no omission of any right or wrong, anything like that. It's just, we think it's a moot point. Now, obviously, the approval of the special exception is being litigated as well. But that litigation isn't mentioned in this settlement agreement. This is just a settlement agreement as to the first piece of litigation. BZA voted and approved that at their last meeting.
On this one?
Yes.
Do you need us to?
There's a signature blank there for a representative of the board to sign to approve that as well.
Okay, I'll note that we have authorized the President of the Board to go ahead and sign now.
Second that.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That is approved also.
That's all I have this evening.
All right. Fisher issues. Fisher Dog. Do you have anything?
No.
Fisher Pesky.
Met with Bariet, and the initial ring that they were doing for Howard County will be completed in Pam, September. We have a date sometime in September. So, it's for the broadband, and they're nearing completion, and they're moving rapidly forward and kind of potentially may have some plans for the future as well.
Probably hooked up probably the next
They're working on it, yes.
They're working hard to start out in the ring, getting their tents placed and fiber, so they're working hard. All right, I have nothing. So, public comment.
Wouldn't be a meeting if I didn't make a comment.
That's true. Which backseat you come up here.
So, I just want to shed light, as a spectator here, things I see and how I interpret them, okay? One, Mr. Seeline spoke about three different cases of rezoning from ag to rural residential. We're asking for the same thing. Rezone it right, from ag, commercial industry, power generation facility, because that's what it is. Can't do that. Second thing is, is now I see we're worried about criminals spending $3 to use the ATM machine, but we're not worried about me spending $500 some dollars for my well testing. That's, I mean, you can't hardly shed any brighter light than that, right? Like, you're worried about $3. I'm worried about $500 to $1,000 a year, but I can't get that. Unless you're going to change something in that ordinance, which, that's why I'm here once again, to keep being that squeaky wheel. Maybe I'll catch some grease here sooner or later. So, if you could look at that ordinance, amend it, protect my well from contamination, not damage, and a property value. And we discussed, and I was discussing with somebody else earlier, property values are slippery slope because perhaps my assessed value will not change with the solar farm. But I'm telling you right now, if anybody's shopping for a house, they get on Google Earth and they zoom on my house and they see I'm surrounded by 511,000 solar panels, they're saying, "Next, please." So, my market will be destroyed. If I don't have a market, I can't sell my house. If I can't sell my house, then it absolutely affects my If I can't sell my house, then it absolutely affects my property value because I basically got to give it away just so I can move. You know, so those are just two things to consider if somebody's sitting over here looking and listening and interpreting. We rezone for people to live somewhere. Why? Why can't they get that same special treatment, especially since they live here? They're not even big business. They ought to get that same, same treatment, but they don't. It's all about taxes and tax money. And that's what, the benefit of this thing out here out east is money. Zone it right. You'll get all the money you want. So, that's all I got, guys. Thanks.
Thank you. Anything else? Anybody else for a public comment? If none, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. Motion second to adjourn. All papers say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned.